Okay, I'd like to open up the the 10th meeting of the planning board and take a roll call vote. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delisio?
Here.
Ms. Foley?
Sorry, I'm just looking at results. Here.
Ms. Olney?
Here.
Ms. Stilger?
Here.
And Ms. Tenny?
Here.
Okay, I just want to advise everyone to go through the chair if you want to speak. This meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. You know, Hunter informs us that we have a letter from Lorraine Iomoni and a Gloucester planning board. This time I will allow any public comments on any item that's not on the agenda. Limited amount of time. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Is Gail on?
Gail?
I'm here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the committee handbook discussion. Sarah brought this up last meeting. This handbook is given to all recently elected or appointed board committees, commission members. It's 13 pages of duties, rules, and regulations. I was only aware of the existence of this handbook, and I guess it was recently made aware to me, and I guess it was instituted after I was elected onto the board. And I don't know if every board member here actually has that document. The document is in your packet. I'd like to have members go through it and comment on any statements that we would like to add, amend, or bring forward to the town clerk. Would anybody go look through that, or would you want to table that till next meeting?
It seems it seems to me that if this is the manual that other boards are using, that we should adopt it.
As written?
As written. I mean.
Anyone else had a chance to go through it?
I've looked through it. It's pretty self-explanatory, common sense. So I don't feel the need to give planning board specific comments on it.
Okay.
I would just add that we should probably reference it in our own rules and regulations.
Right, I was, yeah, there are some duplication between that, a few, on a few things like agendas and minutes in the proposed regulations.
Okay, so we're, we'll acknowledge it, and it's good as written. No other comments from the board, is what I'm gathering?
Do we need a motion to adopt it as our own?
Uh, we could do that.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the committee handbook prepared by the town clerk as in 2022, dated 2022, commission committees, boards, and commissions handbook 2022 as guidance for the planning board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Olney?
Christine.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Stilger?
Yes.
Ms. Delisio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Districts 3A update. Betsy, are you on?
I am on.
So, um, we have an update on the task force and?
So far, five members have been appoint or have expressed interest or have been designated by their committee and/or board. And I have sent out a reminder to people that they need to get on it and appoint somebody from their board. I don't know who is appointing the at-large people, but I've put out a reminder as well that the at-large people, one, has to have climate resiliency experience. So I've asked for people to submit everything or submit to people to, to me or to Greg in the Board of Selectmen by by mid-April.
It's important that we get going on this. All right, any other comments on the task force? Thank you, Betsy. Take something out of order. Before we have a public hearing, not scheduled till seven, so. Last month, the board unanimously voted to pass over Article 18 and 19 ADUs senior housing, and the select board did not vote to move forward with our administrative bylaw amendments. I'd like to begin the discussion on where the board wants to go from here with these amendments and the others for fall town meeting, including an outreach public hearing in June and what our next step should be. I'll open that up for discussion on where we, where we think we want to head for the fall town meeting on these amendments. I know on the administrative zoning bylaws, I think the Board of Selectmen would approve ours if the the vote would be of a joint planning board and the select board on choosing alternates. I think that was the rubbing point from, from moving that one forward. I think it's a pretty simple one, and I think if we maybe make that change, that would go forward and might be an easy one to bring to the fall town meeting. I'll start off with that one. Any discussion on that?
I would just comment if they wanted change, and again, I apologize for my voice. I don't know what's going on. That they should give us some solid reasons why they would want to change that or some backup data or something to justify a change and then we doesn't work.
It seems like what we could do on that topic is look and see how other towns appoint associate members and maybe see if there's been any problem or, or issue, and then we'd have some basis for making our recommendation back to because there was considerable, the, you know, six or eight people who came to the public hearing did have opinions about that. So I think we have to, so it might be useful to find out how other people do it and how that works for them. But I do feel that that's, that getting associate members for special permits is in the town's interest regardless of how they get appointed.
Well, and I did some research on that if you want me to provide.
That'd be great.
Would you volunteer?
Oh, I just said I did some research on that, of how other towns do it, and so some towns it's hard to find, but
Not even if it has associate members either.
Yes, and you know, I'll give you the breakdown, but you know, some towns have the select board and the planning board, some have the mayor, some have just the planning board, some don't have associate members, some have one associate member, some have two, you know, so, but it's, it's kind of, it appears to be a town by town choice.
Okay, so we'll get some feedback from the select board for next meeting and look at other towns. But
Yeah.
is that one we kind of think we might want to move forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we also have amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. This one, I'm not too sure about moving that forward at this time, but I'll listen to comments.
I have a proposal. We now have comments from the, from town council. And I think some of them were instructive, and what I'd like to do is before the middle of May is to try redrafting both the accessory dwelling unit and the senior housing bylaw and present them to the board for consideration and discussion.
So we drafting them?
Yeah, I'll draft them. Well, they're already drafted.
But makes it toward the changes.
Tweaking them.
So I have another issue, sorry to interrupt. And that is that I think the ADU, we, one of the things we heard in the process was that people actually liked some of the provisions in the more comprehensive ADU bylaw.
Yeah.
So I think we might take the opportunity in June to get constructive feedback, kind of, instead of presenting something as done, say, well, what about this, or this, or this, and what are people's feelings about the various segments? Should we limit? Should they be as of rate for small? Should they, you know, some of the, should they have annual or a five-year rolling registration of them, you know, some of those elements, and maybe we could break them down and get feedback on those elements. I think also people are extremely confused with ADUs and the employee housing. So I feel like we now know enough and have heard enough to first explain it in a better way and then get input on how to modify it, because I think that the, well, the data is quite clear from the ZBA, which I can present next time. I took that list of permits for the last five years and did a analysis of what special permits the ZBA had was applied for and what were granted and what sections they were under the bylaw. The data came from Sarah Melish, but I can send it out in advance and we can check minutes for things that people think are erroneous. But I think that, that in June, we could get some input on those things, because people are calling the employee housing accessory dwelling units, and it's not. I mean, it might technically be, but it's not, we don't, in our bylaw, it's not called that. So.
I was going to ask Chris if you, you said we got comments back. Did we also get comments back from council on the senior housing that needs to be incorporated?
Yes, yeah, we had both, yep.
Okay, and did they address the issue of making all units accessible?
Yes, they did.
They did, okay. I think it would be good to bring that back and discuss that.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Are, are these comments prior to town meeting? Do we all have these? Are these the same ones?
They were sent to us this.
It's been sent to us on email or something.
Yeah, they, I think after town meeting, at least I didn't see them until after town meeting.
This recent town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume we went to everybody. I didn't like.
I think it was like last one, Tuesday or Wednesday.
If they didn't go to everybody, we'll make sure they go on.
So with, with that, could we get, do we all get data and I'm sorry, are you done?
I'm done.
And perhaps maybe jumping off of what Sarah was saying that, you know, with the ADUs and the senior housing, if we're going to look at them again, that maybe we have work working sessions with residents that we can sit down and draft them there rather than no offense, but one planning board member going and drafting it, and then we present it, where we haven't really gotten the feedback again. I just think it would, residents would feel more involved in the process if we did that. And I will push once again what we have heard that, you know, we need to clarify and clear up the language, but we also need some data behind these to present to them, to residents.
Oh, go ahead.
Any other comments?
Did you want to go, Christine?
So, I appreciate the work Sarah and Chris have done in the past. I really do think there needs to be a subcommittee on zoning bylaw changes. I think it's when it comes down to the wire, you know, track changes aren't had, conversations aren't had, this kind of data is missed. I think there needs to be a more formal process and minutes so people can kind of track some of these things going forward. I think a lot is lost, and I, just for that instance that we just had, a lot of the information isn't being communicated back. And I would like to bring up the suggestion that I brought up before is the amnesty period of current ADUs that are illegal, that, you know, there's lots of communities out there, and I will bring that to a meeting and offer that language, because I think we do need to just capture. There's no reason for people to apply to this if there's no penalties for having an illegal one. So I think we need to capture the ones that have not been captured and get those on the books going forward. So before something goes into effect, I think that, or simultaneously needs to happen. Just don't see the benefit of people going forward to have one if there's no penalty for not applying for one.
Okay, Betsy, you have a comment? Betsy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. So when I worked in, in Ipswich back in the 80s and 90s, there were a number of illegal units, and this is to address Christina's comment. Number of illegal units. And they were just kind of tucked away everywhere, and we ended up drafting a bylaw that gave a grace period of roughly one year to two years for somebody to come in and and permit their ADU. And in some situations, it involved, as you know, Ipswich has a number of historic homes. It ended up that the historical commission did not want to see, you know, second means of egress, you know, open staircases coming out of historic homes, so it was a balance. But we were able to capture the bulk of those units through a special permit process and a grace period. And I would recommend that, I've done that in a couple of other communities, and, you know, you're given X amount of time to come in and settle up, and if you don't, you're, you're then fined and told to remove the unit.
So this would be language in the ADU bylaw.
It's a separate one. Is that in the general bylaws or was it a zoning bylaw?
It was a zoning bylaw. ADUs are not in the general bylaws.
Right, I just didn't know how you did the grace period. It's zoning, okay.
Laura?
You incorporate it into the bylaw.
So if we're bringing forth for further discussion these two zoning regulations, whether or not they end up going to town meeting in November, I think it would be, since we've all been talking about them as a town, it would be good to bring the new language and present it for discussion and then, and say, we're not ready to make a decision yet on whether we're bringing one or both forward. But I do think it's fresh in people's mind. I while I think community participation is, is valuable and necessary, I don't think that trying to write it live is going to be necessarily effective, because it's hard to do that on the spot, and, you know, you'll hear from some people, but it doesn't mean we have a representative, you know, kind of cross-section of the town. But I do think it would be useful to bring the language, maybe, you know, get help from some of our professionals here on the staff to yeah, I was thinking we could get help from our professional staff in terms of presenting it at a town, either the public hearing or some other, some other meeting to, you know, kind of go through the highlights of the language in a PowerPoint style, show some precedent images of what ADU or senior housing can look like. Maybe show some examples, you know, precedents from other town, and that, to me, that would get at some of the data, which I think of as sort of information, like what does this really look and feel like in the character of our town, and what are the goals behind it? So we keep bringing back the words, and the words obviously are the regulations, so it's really important, but maybe some images and some more presentation style would help. I think that's, those are good comments.
Betsy, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to ask something Betsy said was about imposing fines, I think. You said, Betsy, how is that done? Through what office?
I believe it was done through the building inspector's office, because it was non-compliance with zoning, and so that was, and I believe that the new, well, the proposed administration section that would be considered for fall town meeting would give the building inspector the ability to impose fines. I think that was one of the key elements of that section of, proposed section of the bylaw, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Basically, if they didn't comply with getting a special permit, then they were told they had to remove the unit, and if they did not remove the unit, then they would either go to court or start getting fined in the report.
So?
So I think, I go back to what I said before, which is that I think we have, we need to start with the ADU topic. We need to actually have some definitions. Because, and I like the idea of a grace period for those violations of building code, which, or of zoning, which are out there. ADUs among them. But I think that we have things that predated zoning, so those are exempt. So that would be an easy one to register. We have a bedroom bathroom with a countertop stove plate and a refrigerator, which is technically not a kitchen, so therefore not illegal, and maybe we need to change that definition in our zoning, because I think that's what we have in a lot of places, and that seems to me to a neighborhood to be risky about the Airbnb kind of, kind of thing. And then we may have the do-it-yourself kitchen that nobody got a permit for, and then we have the employee housing pieces. So I like your idea of kind of showing what those look like in plan or in actuality. And then I like the idea of getting definition around those and a grace period so that we, you know, have safety regulations and know where they are and can create the lease that was proposed in the other, in the longer ADU version. But I think if we started off with understand, really all understanding and using the same terminology to define these things, that would be a good start, and maybe we can start by, by doing that, and I'd be willing to take a stab at defining it, maybe people could then, for the next meeting, and then people could decide if that, those definitions are, make sense as we talk about things. Because I think that's part of our problem. I think everybody, a lot of people are using different words for, doing, using the same word and implying different things. So, you know, I mean, so for example, illegal ADU. That it's hard, it's, it's unclear what that means to, to me. And, you know, and I sit in a house that has a what I believe wasn't, it's a, was permitted under the employee exemption or and it's listed as to family on the assessor's record, so I'm paying taxes based on that, so that doesn't strike me as illegal. But it didn't, it's being, you know, anyway, we could, there, there are lots of circumstances, right? So I could create a table that, that sort of lays out a number of these things and how they might have come to be, so we can use the same terminology. At least understand what they are, because I think there's a real diverse set of them.
Why don't we do this, why don't we get the turn to the legal comments?
Back to everybody, right.
To everyone for next meeting.
For them right now.
And let's decide if, you know, how we want to, the process after we, we see that and what we want to add or not add. Also, if we want to move these things forward to fall town meeting, I'm not too convinced that we want to have a dense, another density issue at fall town meeting. I'm not entirely convinced of that right now, but with the fact that we have this 40A density change looming. Double density changes would be problematic for us, so. But let's get, let's, let's get it, let's keep moving on those, and then what about a bylaw? Where do we stand on that, and do we want to craft something on that one? Mary?
Well, as you know, I've been pushing the floodplain for a long time, and I don't think we can move the needle at all with any discussions on 40A or anything else without having that floodplain, so I would like to get that started. And just one thing that might be off-topic, but what Sarah was, not off-topic, but, you know, some of these things with definitions, I think with your example that you were saying at your house, and I could be easily proven wrong, but I think a lot of times the special permit, especially for permits, special permits, especially for employees, say, as long as that person is employed, and then once there's no longer an employee, it's no longer valid, but then what people do is they just leave it and then rent it out, right? So that becomes an enforcement.
And get taxed on it.
Well, whatever. So, yeah, and I'm not saying, but so I think it's all encompassing. We can't do one part of the thing without doing the other part.
I agree, I agree with you.
But back to the floodplain, yes.
So would you be willing to work with Betsy on starting something like that? Okay, can you guys? Betsy, would you work with Mary on that?
I'm on board.
Anyone else interested?
Like I said, I think it's important to keep these conversations and keep notes, because, you know, a lot of the confusion that happened over the last several years is being able to track the changes. So I do think it's important to keep these in subcommittee meetings and keep notes and keep records. There should, there was no way to track any of the changes over the last two years, so.
I think there were track changes that were put up. It was hard. We were making a lot of changes, and a lot of it was this, we were replacing sections in whole, so.
So what I would recommend with, with floodplain is, yeah, we're not just saying, oh, we're removing the old and replacing all with the new. I mean, it's got to kind of be track change from what we have to what's new. So at least, even if it's a complete overhaul, at least people know what was removed, you know, I mean, you have to have some way to reference back that we used to have this and now we have this, so.
I just, I just, I guess I've, I if we can do it with floodplain, that's great. I think that, you know, Mark Varoski's draft seven, which I tried to follow, was incomprehensible to me. Maybe not to others, as to what. It was, and it was using track changes, because it was.
Well, to be fair, he only used it sometimes, so sometimes he did, sometimes he didn't, and things were added but not tracked, and things were taken.
Going forward, let's put a track changes on whatever we incorporate on in this from what we got from town council.
Well, we'd have to track change from either what we currently have, and just so everybody knows, I mean, we don't even have a clean
I know.
version of the bylaws to date, so I
That's true.
I don't know when that's going to be finalized, but
I know the town.
Town council, uh, town clerk, and Betsy, you're working on that.
What are we starting from if there is no, is there a regulation that we're starting from? That is, in floodplain, in floodplain only, floodplain only.
Yes, we have a floodplain bylaw.
So we have a floodplain, right, so, and we haven't, when we're talking about council, we haven't changed that.
No.
So that's
It's fresh.
That's version zero, and everything else we do, I mean, why do you want to track every time you change a word in it? But, you know, getting from A to B, we've got the original, we've got the current bylaw, and then we've got what you're proposing, which is going to go through a round of changes until it's done. I think in the case where we have just one and one, you know, comparing, comparing them, I hope will be easier, and maybe at the end, all the changes can be tracked against the beginning, but I just, for me, I don't feel like I need to see every round, that every, every word changed, but comparing it to existing with where you get to, I think that's instructive.
The key element on the floodplain is that it has to be reviewed by both the state and both FEMA. And if it's not signed, sealed, delivered, approved, you may not have flood insurance. So we have to be very careful about this. That doesn't say we can't do it by fall town meeting, but it's doable, but I think we have to I think we have to be careful and make sure we have the right sign-offs from the state and the feds.
All right, so let's.
So the state does a model floodplain bylaw, so we can just work on that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, now I have a comment.
Please.
Uh, just to end this up, one of the problems we had in the last year or so Uh, just to end this up, one of the problems we had in the last year or so was that we were drafting these regulations ourselves without legal guidance from Mark Bobrowski. And so a lot of the changes we ended up with at the last minute turned out to be incorrectly worded because we're not lawyers. And so for, for example, on the senior housing, when we said all units have to comply with ADA, that would cause huge problems for a lot of senior housing units. And in fact, that's not what we want to say. We want to say is that that all senior housing will comply with the ADA requirements imposed by the state. Not, not that we want to make every unit ADA compliant. But, um, the cost of those units would be exorbitant because you're talking about wheeling showers and elevators and all kinds of things that may not be needed for a senior housing unit. The same with accessory dwelling units. Somehow we have to get early on in this the professional help we need to draft the correct language. Otherwise, we'll be back in the same boat again.
Maybe we can get intent. We want to accomplish the following things and then give it to somebody to draft.
Maybe, yeah, maybe so.
But I thought both town council and Bobrowski reviewed all of these.
Bobrowski didn't review the last set of right changes we made before the town meeting.
We were told he did.
No, he did. He, he did, but he said he did, but he didn't give us detailed comments.
And then they reviewed by town council. So we had two sets of lawyers.
Town council's review came after town meeting, so that was not much good to us.
We need a better process.
Well, yes, exactly.
We have Betsy keeping us on task.
So I'll, I'll, uh, contact select board as the reason why they wanted, uh, this vote, this joint vote of for, um, associates. You'll look at, um, other towns. You'll also get with, uh, Betsy on start on a floodplain. You'll incorporate, uh, you guys will incorporate the town council comments for the next meeting. We'll put it in the package and then we'll discuss these again on how we want to move forward.
We'll come up with some definitions, draft, start of definitions and the ZBA data.
And I think it'd be good to engage town council now instead of at the end of this.
Yeah, we, we need to, yeah, we need to move ahead now.
And we
Not be rest minute like last time.
We also agreed last time that just, um, none of everybody was here, that we were gonna, um, meet with, uh, Sarah Melish, that Chris and I were gonna meet with Sarah Melish at town council to just see, better understand our current, um, section seven, uh, nonconforming uses and see if we are correctly interpreting it since the proposed changes by Mark Bobrowski seem to look exactly like ones we currently have. And make sure we're currently in, understand how we're currently, understand what our current bylaw actually says.
Yep.
So we haven't done that yet.
And just so you know, town council did weigh in on a ZBA case on that, so she probably already had the answer.
I did not know.
So I think, get back to my point, I think there's lots of people that would like to be involved in these conversations. So is there just a working session that we could have instead of?
Yep. Well, we said we were gonna post it. We haven't done that yet.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Becky, you have a quick comment? I want to get this one.
I, I do. I just, Ron, I'll save you a step. Um, is the, is Mary's question to the select board, is it why the plant, uh, select board took the stance on the planning board appointing its own alternate, alternates? Is that what your question is, Mary?
Pretty much. What, what was the reasoning behind, um, the joint vote between the planning board and the select board on the choo, the choosing of alternates in that, that bylaw amendment as written?
Okay, I will go ahead and add that onto our agenda for the 18th, so, um, we'll take, we'll have that on. And if anybody wants to attend to see how it progresses, we'll discuss it that evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm about to open a public hearing on 117 School Street. Just a reminder to the public, respect to all participants, whether you disagree or not. No matter your personal innuendos, tolerated. Keep your remarks focused on the topic and issues being discussed. Refrain from repetitive, repetitive questions asked or comments made previously. So everyone has the opportunity to present their complaints. So this is what holds true for the two public hearings we'll, we'll be hearing holding tonight. So at this time, I'd like to vote to open the public hearing on a request for determination under section 10.3 of the zoning bylaw for relief as may be necessary for a site drainage plan on 117 School Street, assesses map lot two in District A, filed with the town clerk on March 9. A site visit by, by the board was held today at 5:30 PM. Public hearing notice has been, the public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket in the March 23rd and 30th additions. The planning board will make a determination that the designed stormwater system is satisfactory. The applicant, Nicole Day, has Brian Stein of BDS Design to give us a brief overview. At this time, um, I think I'll turn it over to you, Brian. Are you here?
I am.
And if you
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and again, thank you for
Hold on, hold on, hold on a second, one, one second. Um, I'd like to vote to open the public hearing, um, uh, Ms. Grayton?
Yeah, uh, so moved, uh, yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. DeWesey?
Yes.
Ms. Pilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Chair, yes, okay, we're open. Open for business. Thank you, sorry.
But thank you for taking us on, on time tonight, given my, uh, time constraints. Um, I would be brief. I, I do apologize for missing the site meeting. I'm currently in Virginia. Um, so again, apologies for that. But, um, real quick, I think you got a brief overview of the project tonight than some of you. Uh, we are proposing a new, uh, pool house slash barn structure in the rear of the property. Um, along with a small soap pool and pervious or permeable patio, along with some landscaping, uh, permeable pavers and, uh, new areas of the driveway. Um, and, you know, again, some various landscape elements. We, um, are over the 15% impervious allowed in this zone, which is zone two. Uh, we hired, um, Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering, who was on the call tonight, who did the drainage plan that you have in front of you. Um, to, again, uh, infiltrate as much as we, as much as we could, um, of the rainfall and back into the ground. Um, so with that brief overview, I will turn it over to Mike for more specifics on his drainage plan.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Chair, Mr. Art, if I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead. I'm giving him.
All right, for the record, Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering. Um, if I can, I'm happy to put up a plan as well, uh, just so we can, I'll have the visual. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
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 Yes. Um, so as Brian said, we're, we're here for 117 School Street, the improvements to the rear property. And I heard you say that you were, the, the board was there this evening, so you're, you should look pretty familiar. School Street is, is over here. On the left of the screen, uh, drive, existing driveway, existing house, down to what is more of a parking area, garage, on, on the rear of the house. So as Brian said, the, the project is proposed, uh, pool building slash, um, barn, I think he said. Which is highlighted in this hatch area here. We're going to expand the driveway, uh, on here to create a little easier for, uh, turnaround. I don't know if anybody drove into the site, but it's a little tight, you know, once you get kind of parked in there, so. Creating a little bit of ability to turn around. An attached patio, uh, for both the proposed building and then to connect the driveway to the main house with a fire table inside. And then as Brian mentioned, proposed, uh, sitting pool, I think was the, the best way to describe it. Um, patio will extend around the proposed building and then where the landscape architecture calls for some, uh, stone squares just set in the grass just to kind of create a transition area through, uh, the patio, closed brick patio, the, the closer brick patio to, to the rear yard, uh, to the, to what would be the east, north arrow here. In terms of drainage, we, uh, I did do a soil test right here. Uh, good, good soil, uh, mostly sand. Uh, wasn't quite able to call it sand, so it is a little bit sand. So definitely certain approach in terms of the infiltration rate. Uh, I just couldn't, uh, say there wasn't enough fines in there to, to, well, love to a little bit of a slower current rate, so, so we are using that. The existing driveway, like I said, to remain, we're creating a high point at the edge here, uh, and creating a permeable, permeable paver section through here, which will have sand base, gravel and sand base. And you basically just make that section a, a net zero in terms of runoff. And then you can see the flow arrows here, um, creating the edge along this side as well. To direct it to this permeable paver section again, that will have a, a stone and sand base providing filtration. And then this will, this, this white area here is, is a landscape bed, uh, no, no impervious there. And then this darker hatch area, which is the overall patio, will be a permeable stone as well. So an open joint, um, stone, sand underneath, permeable impervious. The, the pool building will have a, a ridge roughly cutting it in half. The front half will pour into the, uh, permeable paver and that has been sized to accommodate that. The remainder will come off to the rear and, and run as it does naturally. Now you can see them pushing everything kind of towards the back. Um, and then there, the stones here, as I said, they'll be open jointed, uh, just laid down on the grass. So the, the crux of the drainage was, was basically just taking the, the existing driveway and we did model the ridge, ridges of the existing house. So probably the, not quite half of it comes over to the driveway and will be captured by the, by the permeable pavers. Uh, the rest again will, will flow off as it does naturally now. Uh, some of it will get intercepted here, but I didn't, I didn't account for that. I accounted that it would, would run. And I, and I designed the back of the property as the design point, so everything flowing from west to east, School Street to back. Um, and looked at everything pre to post, uh, and in the pre to post report, you can see that we are reducing both peak and runoff. We are definitely infiltrating, uh, and then holding some water. So when this project is done, the, the back of the area should see less water than all that's now. Um, I think that's a, that's a quick, but hopefully informative overview. Happy to answer any questions. And I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, any comments from the board? Actually, um, I'll ask Betsy to make comments. Any questions or, or comments from the board? Christina, you have a question?
Um, I have a few comments. So I guess I'm just a bit, I don't see measurements, I don't see drop, like, design, numbers, what's the, you know, the scale of the, not the, not necessarily the scale, like what the actual, I mean, we're making a determination on something that we don't actually, to me, have numbers here. And part of this, I mean, the property is already over, it's a nonexist, a nonconforming property. It's already over the 15%. My calculations, it's 23%. Some of the numbers in the documents say it's going to end up being 40%. My calculations say it's going to be a 30%. And, um, you know, I, I, our bylaws are pretty clear that some of these should not, they're not allowed. Like, a pool to me isn't an acceptable use in the overlay district. So it doesn't, in my opinion, that doesn't even allow us to get to this conversation. So I'm a bit, maybe someone else can explain it to me better, why we're actually at this point. To me, maybe this should be at the ZBA first, um. This would have to go forward exactly as issued, but there's nothing, there's no numbers, there's no where things are going to be to like conform with, so I'm not really.
I think, um, I, I think Betsy, Betsy, did you want to comment on what you've done?
So this property, um, went through the building inspector for a zoning determination. And, um, so, um, the application was submitted, I actually thought that the application to the zoning board should have been submitted first because that was a ZBA special permit. The planning board here is only making a determination that the drainage system is quote satisfactory, unquote. So, um, Nate DeRozier's has reviewed the drainage and, um, to affirm Christina's comments, I came out with a roughly a 30% lot coverage. So, um, Nate has reviewed the drainage and believes that it is satisfactory. And, um, I, I have to trust him because I don't read drainage calculations. This project will require a zoning board special permit for the pool.
For the structure.
For the house, yeah.
So I guess to further my comment, because I wasn't actually done. So in order to say that we're not going to adversely affect groundwater, kind of have to know where groundwater is. So without knowing that, and a pool is not under one of the exemptions, I just think there's a lot of questions here that haven't been answered. So a pool is not in an exemption of, building, a foundation is. To me, a pool is not part of that. So if the property is already over, I'm not, I'm not actually sure what we're discussing.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Betsy, but we're determining whether the recharge system that they have designed is adequate.
Satisfactory, yes. That's the language in the bylaw. And Nate DeRozier has made that determination, has written in my staff memo.
So I guess when we look at the bylaw, there's certain things that are not allowed. And a pool, to me, is one of these things that is not allowed, um, if it's going to be, it's, you know, 10.3 oh, 10, 3, 5, 1, oh. The removal of soil, loam and gravel or any other mineral substance within four week feet of the historical high water table as determined, unless the substances are removed and redeposited. This doesn't fall within that, so I'm, I don't feel like this is proper, to be honest.
Lovely, good question, clarifying question. So, um, I'm, I like clarity on what our jurisdiction is here. If Betsy's saying we're reviewing only for drainage, who is the special permit granting authority? Is it the ZBA?
I think it's the ZBA. Betsy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the ZBA, isn't it?
It's the ZBA for the pool.
And the structure.
And the structure.
Structure.
And the setbacks and the nonconforming.
For the special permit.
Mr. Chair, could I address something real quick?
Yes, go ahead, Ben.
So in my conversations with the building inspector, um, we, we do not need a special permit except for the pool. We purposely kept our overall impervious to below, just, just under 30%, which means we do not have to go to the zoning board because we're over that. That is the, that is the allowed impervious in this district. There is the, obviously, the 15% in the overlay district for the zone two, which is why we're here for the drainage. The soap pool is a prefab concrete pool that is essentially laid into place and it is partially above ground by two or three steps. Um, so it will not fall within that four feet of historical high groundwater.
Well, how do you know that if, where is groundwater?
What is the, yeah, so what is the, the high groundwater, the elevation over there?
Do you have that, Mike?
Yeah, so the test pit shows that we went down, um, it's at, uh, 72 inches, which is six feet. So it's six feet below the elevation of 40.5, which put it at an elevation of 34.5. Uh, nothing was observed above, excuse me, nothing was observed above that 34 and a half elevation. You can see that that test pit was done pretty, pretty close in proximity to the pool. So if the pool is two feet above and we're six feet down, we're, quick math, I think we're, how deep did you say the pool was, Ben?
I think it's only four feet deep.
Okay, so we're, we're four feet above the, what, what is the estimated seasonal high? Now, if we're talking about historical high, that would be a different number from other than different. That's just the estimated seasonal high. Uh, and historical high is something that you, you'd look at through different kinds of data accumulated throughout the year. I don't have that. I don't have that number in front of me, but I can tell you the field observation was the thirty-four and a half.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this tiny plan. And so seasonal, the groundwater is thirty-four and a half, and what is the elevation of the, um, darkly shaded, um, permeable paver patio?
So that's, this is a forty-one con, forty-one contour right here, this black line, as I followed around. So this will be, um, above, and here's the forty-two as well, so between forty-two and forty-one, so forty-one and a half, plus or minus.
On page seven of your report, you show, uh, pervious at fifty-nine percent, impervious at forty percent. So why, why, where's the number thirty percent coming from? Your hydro pad model.
Sure, um, I just need to open that up, so I just turned off the share for a second, I should bear with me. And if you could give me that page number again, I'd appreciate it.
Page seven.
Page seven, thank you, bear with me a second.
There's two page sevens, so it might be like.
There's two page sevens.
It might be page fourteen or something.
Sixteen, page sixteen, it's the second page seven, sorry.
Ah, okay. I think I know what you're asking, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at it before I give you that, um, that answer.
While you're doing that, I, I just wanna make sure we're not, Nate, you, uh, just, while you're looking for that. Betsy, you said you asked Nate about the, um, runoff, but the issue here is the coverage for the water recharge. So it seems to me stormwater runoff.
That was my question.
Is a different thing.
Yeah, my question, uh, Betsy, was did Nate opine on the, uh, if there was any degradation to the groundwater?
It's hard for him to do that.
Based on this design?
And, no, he did not.
Could we, I guess for Nate, for, for this, and then in the future, could we ask for the documentation from the building inspector, DPW engineer? I mean, this, this is third person, and I don't think it's right for us to vote on something that we don't have any documentation.
So will we, Nate's having.
I think we.
Microsoft gives them.
I think we wanna get the, the DPW's in, or somebody's professional opinion of the degradation to the, um, water. I, I would think. Some kind of, uh, engineering opinion, uh, not just the recharge, but, um, degradation of groundwater quality. Some kind of opinion, professional opinion. Any comment, yeah?
Yeah, um, so in the, so the numbers that we have that are relevant are the numbers in the, in the report, the calculation, which says it's reducing the runoff. So that's a good thing, I don't think the dimensional requirements are not in our purview as to the size of the pool and so forth. Um, the, the parts of the application we're seeing are silent on the foundation for the building, the pool building. And so that most likely has a deeper foundation than the pool requires, as I kind of.
A slab on grade, or.
So we, it would be good to hear some more about that, because that might go deeper.
But that is, that's exempt because it's a building foundation.
Say it again, Christina?
It's exempt because it's a building. Building foundations don't count.
So it's exempt, so, so then I guess we're back to the issue of how much coverage is allowed.
And that's where the size comes into play.
Yeah.
We don't have dimensions.
We do have these areas.
There's that. Yeah, but I feel like key, but it's difficult.
Yeah, we're not. So this isn't, we need something to come back to and say, this is what we approved, and without dimensions, it's pretty gray.
Well, 'cause anything that, um, so I think we need to be pretty clear, because if anything's approved tonight, if it, when, when it goes in front of the ZBA, if the ZBA approves anything that's different than what we have, which we're just going with general, we don't have any specifics. So if they change, well, okay, that pool has to move four feet this way, or you have to reduce this by four feet, or whatever. We'll say, well, what did you approve, and we'll say, we don't know, we just have a picture. So I think we do need those specifics only for this case where, um, the sequence of events of how things are getting approved.
Well, to that same point, if we go, if, if they, let's say the, um, proposed building is shown at, I don't know, twelve by twenty, and then it gets constructed, that is effect, that is the area of two hundred and forty square feet. But without dimensions, we don't know that. And so if it was in the field, there's a note here that changes can be made in the field and then recorded. So let's say it becomes twelve by twenty-two, now it's a bigger footprint. And we don't have any, I, I agree, we need, there is no, there are no obvious dimensions, or scale on this. There is a scale, there is, there is a graphic scale.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, that's not. That's pretty small. That's not satisfactory for me to approve this.
I guess.
So Betsy, I mean, you went to town council, and they said the only thing the board is really determining is whether the system will not result in the degradation of the groundwater quality. Is that really what the only thing is really in our purview here?
So the issue is, is that in the past, the planning board was, um, reviewing without a public hearing, um, these recommendations, uh, or advisories on whether the stormwater system was satisfactory. And legal counsel made the, and I questioned how, and what was happening is the determination was being made, and then staff was writing a written decision that was getting filed at the town clerk's office, and there was a twenty-day appeal period. I know of no situation where the planning board can issue an advisory without public notice and notice to the abutters. So I questioned that of legal counsel and said, how can this be done? And basically, legal counsel said, you would have to notify the abutters and hold a public hearing on whether the system was satisfactory. And then a written decision would be made and filed with the clerk. So given the fact that there is some, still some outstanding question, what I would suggest is you continue the hearing. And in the meantime, I will talk and get further clarification from Nate and the DPW and the building inspector, and I will get information in writing. And then I will prepare for the next planning board meeting, a draft decision.
Sounds acceptable.
So I have.
Mr. Chair, unless there's more questions, I'd like to just try to streamline this a little bit.
One second, no, just a couple of questions from the board first, Mary, you want?
So, I, it might just be people are, um, conflating terms, but Betsy just said stormwater plan. I think there's a confusion between stormwater and an artificial recharge. I've had a few of these while I've been on the board, and to us, an artificial recharge has always been a device underground that processes the water. So, I, you know, and obviously, we would lean on the town engineers for this, but this flowing the water to pervious pavers and stuff, that's kind of stormwater management, my understanding. I'm not seeing an artificial recharge here, so I don't even know what we're looking at.
I thought it was in the report, but I don't think we all got the report.
Can I, Mr. Chair, could I respond to that?
Go ahead, uh.
I, I think I could offer some clarification to that, at least. Um, and then if there's more info needed, I would provide it. So as I mentioned, this, this area, permeable pavers, uh, both this driveway area and the patio area, I said was an open jointed piece, and there's actually a, um, detail here. So what this is, is we, we, we go down to native interior, we go down to the native soil layer, and then we build this back up with crushed stone. So, I'll back up a second, the, the, the systems that was just referred to, usually they're embedded in stone, either a half pipe or a, or a perforated pipe that are, that's wrapped in fabric. It is, it is wrapped in stone to ideally create storage to hold the water for that recharge. This is essentially the same thing, just without piping, without doing the piping, it allows us to keep a low profile. So the, the entire, the entire patio and driveway, uh, the, the pavers could be different, but the, the idea is, is that they'll be put on our, our crushed stone reservoir. And I've actually given some, some elevation, so, so I've, I've sized the area that it needs. And then these joints here, uh, I'm sorry, then, then there'll be a, a choker cord, which is just a smaller stone to just bleed out a little bit of, uh, any, anything that might be in there in terms of fines. And, and then the pet, the pavers will have a half an inch void between them, which will allow water to just, to infiltrate. So this is something that I've, I've done in the past for, um, it, there's a cost benefit to it, but there's also, again, like I said, a little profile piece, um, and it's just a little less, um, construction, constructed, it, it, because we're gonna build the patio anyway. So this is fully intended to recharge the water, to capture and recharge the water. So I, I hope that helps a little bit, but I'm happy to dive into it more if needed.
So I guess, I guess I'm not clear on the fifteen percent versus the thirty percent. I'm, maybe this is the first time that I'm hearing that you think you can build up to the thirty percent? You have leeway between the fifteen and the thirty. To me, the understanding is this is in the water resource district, so, I mean, we're trying to stay at the fifteen percent, not maximize thirty. So where did we get that understanding?
Correct, you're correct, okay, yeah. I think if they weren't in the water overlay, you can do this grid on, well, current page nineteen, you can do fifteen up to thirty for your maximum lot for structures and impervious. But if you're in that water overlay, that supersedes this, and it's fifteen percent.
Yeah, so land uses that result in the rendering impervious of more than fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot, whichever is greater, unless a system for artificial recharge of precipitation is, is provided, which is satisfactory. The planning board will not result in degradation of groundwater quality.
Well, I think they.
So they're showing that.
I think, I think the DPW has proven that the, the recharge is adequate, but whether it, you know, takes care of the groundwater, uh, quality, I don't think they've opined on that.
So how do we figure that out? If they haven't tested everywhere, there's not, well, that's the thing, it's like.
I'd like to have an engineer look at it, um.
And the other thing is.
Nate can give us a.
There's a plan that needs to be in place, right? There's a lot of things that we haven't followed with this, so it's great that they're proposing this, but are the pavers being maintained, will they be, so there's like a plan that needs to follow through with this. This is an awful lot of coverage to me, and a sensitive area, and I feel like, the intent here is not to build up to thirty percent. So it's enforcement again, who's following through, where's the plan? I think there needs to be some kind of, I mean, we've talked about this, I think, in a meeting before, having part of this decision that the owner supplies something, saying that their property is, the pavers are impervious, are pervious still, I don't know. Like, I just feel like this is, we're in a water crunch, we have some water issues in our town, and we really need to start paying attention to things that are coming in front of us, and be mindful of why these were written, and do everything that we can to protect the water in that area. I mean, these rules are here for a reason.
Well, why would you do that? You have a comment?
Who has a comment? I have, I have a couple of questions. One is sort of procedural, uh, when we were walking the property, um, we were concerned about wetlands in the rear, and I'm wondering how the conservation commission, um, works with us or on their own on something like this? That's one question I have, um, sort of procedure. The second is, the driveway, um, it seems to me, uh, if you wanted to have a smaller percentage, here, you could change the current asphalt driveway to a completely pervious paver driveway, um, and that might help a little bit. I wonder if the homeowners thought about that, um, taking that additional step, uh, to help with the runoff issue at least.
Betsy, any procedure on with the CONCOM on the wetlands that is perceived back in the back of the property?
The CONCOM did not weigh in on this. I'm not aware that the CONCOM was involved in this site.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, could I, could I get some more insight as to the, to why there's the, the thought that there's wetlands in the rear?
It was just our observation, um, walking to the rear of the property, on the neighbor's property.
Right, that, yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm, I'm looking for what did you observe, so I could go out and try and see the, the same thing.
Well, I think the water seemed to flow down that direction, right? So there, there was, there's plans for the, the middle ground, but I know there's a lot of area in the back, that seemed would be flowing into the wetlands.
Yeah, I think we're, we're not wetlands experts, but we, um, it, it, sort of the, the, the generalist in us said, hmm, that looks like it's low and soggy. Whether that's technically a, a wetland, um, we're not qualified to, to say.
But it helps to know that the conservation commission did not have to be involved, is that correct?
No, that's the owner's determination, I think.
And then with respect to, would they consider changing the driveway to all pavers?
We can get back to us on that. Um, let, let's see where we go from here, I, what, it, it sounds like the board would like to have some more information, and maybe, um, continue this to our next meeting. Any, anything we can get from the DPW as to groundwater quality degradation, um.
Seems like we're relying on the DPW a bit too much these days. I mean, we do have the ability to get our own consultant for this, so, um.
Well, they are, they are engineers, they.
They are.
Engineers, why wouldn't we rely on them?
Because they have other jobs to do, and we have a law to help us out, and they're, they're not getting paid to help us, and we have law, you know.
You're suggesting the applicant hire an engineer?
On our behalf, potentially.
I don't think you can with a determination that's, that there would be a special permit. That may be mistaken, but I'm pretty sure.
Well, well, I think if the, the planning board could determine that this isn't sufficient, so we would have to go the special permit route.
Why don't we get further comments from Nate and, Nate and Chuck? And I will confirm with Chris that the Wetlands Protection Act does not apply. And I will get a determination from the building inspector exactly why he sent this case to the board. And that should help clarify.
Sarah?
Um, two questions, or a question, a comment. I'd be curious, uh, whether we consider pervious pavement to be a system for artificial recharge of precipitation? Because that's what's required for rendering of impervious of more than fifteen percent. Land, you know, is, a special permit is required if the land is used, is more than fifteen percent of any lot, which it is, um, impervious more than, and unless a system of artificial recharge is provided, which is satisfactory to the planning board. So the first question I have is, is pervious pavers with a sand or whatever is shown here in this detail an artif, a system for artificial recharge? Or is it simply a, um, rendering of something as being pervious rather than impervious? And I think they're counting it as, uh, being pervious. And so that's different in my mind, because we have considerable amounts of the existing dwelling, the existing driveway, and this, um, new proposed building, which is of some, what's the square feet of the proposed new building?
About nine hundred.
What?
About nine hundred.
Nine hundred square feet. So, um, so that's clearly pervious, impervious. So my first question, and then this, and then I have a comment, but we'll maybe you'll answer my question.
Well, okay, the only thing I saw was the report looked like, the engineering report looked like they were capturing, uh, more runoff.
That's stormwater capture, right?
Stormwater, right.
So.
But stormwater capture through a reservoir, that is the recharge. That has groundwater, stormwater filters through the reservoir course, which holds it. And then it runs through the soils and the soils continue to filter it. I think we, the report should demonstrate, and maybe the engineer can respond to this, that the soils, uh, have adequate percolation to allow the
He said sand.
He said the soils were sandy loam. And so if that, if the report is saying that they have adequate percolation for the reservoir course to act as that collection. I'm not looking for a structure necessarily. I mean, there can be various methods to solve this. A structure isn't better
In fact, maybe worse.
Because a structure needs to be maintained. So sometimes you need to have a structure for space, spatial constraints and other reasons. But a structure has to have an operation maintenance, maintenance plan to, you know, Christina's comment there. This is a passive system that captures the groundwater, captures the runoff, filters it through. And, um, I think the, the thing that's not clear in my mind is the percent of impervious coverage on the lot. And has that, the, I see the report that's demonstrating the stormwater runoff is, is reduced from the, um, you know, the before conditions. I see the method that they're proposing to do that. Um, I'm not an engineer, but if Nate and DPW are looking at that and they say, yeah, we think that's adequate, then I would wanna know about the percent of impervious coverage on the lot overall and, um, understand better why the, uh, do our regulations allow for this other structure to be built, which is not an occupiable dwelling? But, um, so therefore, is it exempt from the, uh, impervious coverage? And have we really gotten to the bottom of all of that?
Okay, that, so, but just to summarize, you're saying that this passive soils and gravel is a artificial recharge and
I don't know what artificial recharge means, I don't understand that term, but that is a recharge system as it's being presented, not my words, as the, as the engineer is presenting it to us.
And then the second, my comment was gonna be, this seems to be a sticking point every time we have one of these. So outside of this, uh, specific permit, I think it would be helpful to have, um, someone, you know, Scott Horersley's under contract for the water resources, come in and just talk to us about these systems, so we understand them in the abstract, so we can better act on them in the future. And we'll know a little bit more about, a sort of a primer on these systems, maybe.
And maybe because the planning board is always asked to be determining this. You know, we have the reports to go on, but none of us are engineers, right? Do we need someone like Scott Horersley or, well, Ron is an engineer.
Soil's engine.
You know, I just looked at the report, it looked like they were recharging more than
That's what I got too. Perhaps we, perhaps we wanna have a consulting.
They seem to confirm that, but then this groundwater degradation thing got me really concerned, so.
May, I just add that if, if, from what you're saying with the, these pervious, that is the recharge, you do have to maintain pervious to make sure that they don't become, I mean, you have to remain, maintain pervious to make sure that it does not become impervious and thus the recharge is a work.
Well, the asphalt does, maybe the engineer can tell us what the maintenance requires.
All right, so, um, Michael, any more further comments on the board's comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I, you know, a couple of clarification points. Uh, I'm happy to provide an O and M for this system, that operation and maintenance program, that's not a problem. Um, I, I meant to have it in there and it's not, but that's my fault and you'll have it for the next, um, your next package. The, the, the piece that I'm struggling with to understand where the board is at is whether or not the board will accept this passive system as a, as a recharge system. That's the intent that it was, is designed to do. Uh, the point of it is that the water will not flow directly across from A to B. It will get captured in those joints and brought to the stone. And again, as explained earlier, um, most, most recharge systems are set in stone. That's, that's pretty much the, the kind of the, the main piece of, of the infiltration that allows the, the water to be held and infiltrated to the ground. Um, i- if the, if the board is, is not comfortable with that, I, I don't wanna resubmit the same thing, but I can certainly tell you that I have done this, uh, with, in different places with different boards. Uh, I could give you some more information on them or try to get some pictures of ones that have been constructed. Happy to provide all of that. I just need a direction in terms of, uh, you know, yes or no, uh, maybe consensus at least. And then in, in regards to the soil, um, there was the soil test done. And I just wanna reiterate that, um, I was, I was apprehensive to call this a, for lack of a better term, beach sand. Obviously, where you guys live, uh, you know what beach sand looks like. You put it in your hand and, you know, water doesn't hold it, stay anywhere near in it. Uh, this just was not quite that. But with the, uh, mass stormwater standards, there's only three basic soil types you can use for an infiltration rate. It's sand, lumi sand or sandy loam. So I was apprehensive, he is the eight minute an inch, uh, number, so I'm using the two point four one. I feel it's conservative because I think this, this perks faster than that, but there, there just isn't an option in between that's accepted in our industry. So I just wanna be clear that there's, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that this, well, this soil can handle a lot. I would, I would think that if my number's probably conservative and if this is built the way we show it, it probably have less problems and therefore more recharge. Um, so the groundwater recharge problem, I, 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 I feel like we're talking about recharge and degradation at the same time. And I just wanna make sure, are we using those interchangeably or are those two different things that we're looking for? Do I need to provide some more information for that? Sorry, long-winded, but hopefully that, some of that makes sense.
So let me sum this up and see if the board, um, is in agreement that I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with having our DPW determine that this, um, system recharge is, let them determine if that's adequate or not. I would be, be happy to listen to their opinion. And then on the, I think there's two separate issues. The amount of, um, impervious that's being recharged and then the de- degradation, possible degradation to the, um, the water, uh, groundwater. So I think those are the three topics I think the board is interested in. And correct me if I'm wrong, but
Dimensional, a plan with dimensions and the clear
And then if you can dimensionalize your plan a little better, maybe show some.
Yeah, I think we need the pavement calculations, the foundation calculations, the pool calculations, everything that's not pervious needs to be calculated out. Um, and I really would like a clarification on artificial recharge, what that means. Can artificial recharge be passive?
I think that's a term that Sarah made up.
No, it's in the bio.
Somebody before Sarah made up. Some other time.
You can look online and you can see, you, you see the artificial recharge systems, right? It's usually this
Like bioswale?
Bioswale is passive, I mean, it's passive.
No, they're like
No, you don't want systems.
Okay, so is that, let's move this along, deflecting everybody. So is that pretty much it from the board? Are you unhappy with?
Yeah.
Are you guys understand what we're looking for, Michael, um, Brian?
Yeah, I, I think I have a pretty good handle of that. And if I could offer my opinion on artificial recharge or something, uh, just to maybe help move the conversation along for further meetings is that, uh, you know, artificial is you're taking water that doesn't necessarily go to that place and putting it into a place like a, a system of some sort and forcing it into the ground artificially. Doesn't necessarily land there from the sky, it doesn't run there from the normal grading, but you're putting it in the ground there versus rainfall just falling on the grass and whatever stays gets recharged, whatever runoff goes. That's kind of the, my high level of opinion, if that helps.
Do you need to ask for public comment?
Okay, good, I just, Chuck, Betsy, you, you on, you understand what we're looking for?
Yes.
Betsy.
I do.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
Okay, any public comment at this time? Okay, so I think the applicant needs to ask for a continuance. Is that the correct procedure?
Oh, no, no. You vote to continue the public hearing to a time and date, sir.
Okay, I'd like to
They don't need to ask for a continuance. The board has the authority to continue to a time and date, sir.
Like authority, okay. So, uh, I would like to make a motion to vote to continue this public hearing to April twenty-fourth at seven PM, our next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Olling?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Grayton?
Yes.
Ms. Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Okay, so we're continuing this till the April twenty-fourth, our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone need to take a break? Yep, there you are. Okay, um, I'd like, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on a request to adopt rules and regulations in accordance with Mass General Laws forty A, section nine, Mass General Laws, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one A and eighty-one B in accordance with the Manchester by the sea zoning bylaw. This public hearing notice, this public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket on March twenty-third and thirtieth. The board will consider rules and regulations regarding general operating procedures, conduct at meetings, site plan, special permit, hiring of consultants, fee schedules. I'll now turn the hearing over to interim planner Betsy Ware for opening, oh, do it again. First, I'd like to vote to open the public hearing.
Someone.
Second.
Mr. Olling?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Grayton?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Philbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Okay, we're open for business. At this time, I'd like to turn the hearing over to interim town planner Betsy Ware for some remarks and what you've been doing.
So, um, about two months ago, um, I realized that the planning board did not have rules and regs and their, uh, special permit and site plan processes were pretty much, um, limited to a two-page document that was found in the back of the subdivision rules and regs. And so, um, I took it upon myself to start working on updating rules and regs, um, including some general provisions, conducted meetings, kind of procedural things on, um, how zoning bylaw amendments are done. Um, and then got into site plan, special permit. There had also been some changes to the driveway bylaw. Uh, it went, um, into the general bylaw, so we needed, and I've been working with DPW on that. So, um, I started drafting and, um, about a month ago, there was a discussion at one of the planning board meetings about, um, the planning board subcommittee on rules and regs, which, I'm sorry, I didn't understand existed. Um, so in any case, um, I asked about how we were gonna have an interface between the rules and regulations committee and what work I was working on. And I was told at the meeting that I was doing something different than what the rules and regs committee was doing. And so I continued on and, um, about four or five days later, I received an email from Christine Delicio, who is the chair of the planning board committee on subdivision, um, on rules and regs, saying that they were going to follow the Town of Harvard model for rules and regs. Um, I took a look at the Harvard model, uh, some of it didn't apply. Basically, um, took into consideration some of the stuff they had, uh, tried to include that in the drafts that I was working on, um, which were based on, um, Town of Manchester by the sea documents. And so what I have done is I generated about an eighty-page document, which includes, um, general provisions, uh, conduct at planning board meetings, how zoning bylaws, how, how the amendment process goes, site plan review, special permit, groundwater recharge, special permits, regulations on driveway entrances, um, subdivision rules and regs, um, will be considered hopefully before the summer. The, um, and then an, an appendices, which includes fee schedule and, um, applications. And the applications are either revamped from existing applications that we have or I decided, um, some of them were pretty limited, so I ended up doing some new ones and, but I attached some of the old ones, um, for comparison purposes. Now, one of the problems that I have had with, um, some of these documents have been buried in appendix F of the subdivision rules and regs, which is not where they belong. They belong in a separate standalone document. Now, what I've drafted, um, the rules and regs can be separate and then we can have a separate section that deals with, um, applications and application process. Um, the bottom line is I wanted to try to get everything in one package so that somebody could look at the rules and regs and say, okay, here's the protocols for general provisions, whether it's how to operate in a Zoom meeting or the Mullen rule or, um, basically how the planning board chair can, um, um, have public meetings, um, the organization of the board, um, the notice, the various notice requirements of public hearing, um, types of notice, what's considered a party of interest, um, what are site visits, um, and how do those operate? Um, I tried executive sessions, contract, uh, con- conflict of interest and recusals. Um, so I tried to include as comprehensive a document as I could. It's not perfect, but it's, it's a damn good document and it's been, um, it's much more robust and much clearer and, um, much more tuned in to the Town of Manchester. So, um, I have gotten comments from three board members. I have incorporated them into the latest draft and I'm waiting for four members to prove, read it and provide me with comments. And we had a discussion about it at the last meeting, um, and there wasn't a lot of, of comment on it. Um, but, um, anyhow, that's, that's what the, so my goal was trying to see if we could get something adopted. Uh, I'm particularly concerned about site plan and special permit before, um, cell signaling came in. Um, because if we want, legal counsel basically advised, if we wanna have outside consultants, we need to have very clear language on that whole process. And that whole process by state law does involve the planning board, but it also involves the board of selectmen. So I wanted to get that clearly written in there. The, I've tried to beef up the special permit sections to allow for, um, and, and Laura Teddy was very helpful on this in offering a number of, uh, scenarios where we might need outside consultants. So, um, we've, I've got a fair amount of language in there about if we hire outside consultants, it could be for traffic, it could be for, uh, impacts to existing properties, it could be for wildlife habitat, it could be for water supply, it could be for a number of things. So the goal was to try to beef it up, um, beef up all these documents and and try to get it adopted before cell signaling comes in, in mid-May.
Yeah, just for the board's information, cell signaling has contacted Betsy and they're looking to come to us in May. So that was why there's, there's some urgency here. So yes, thank you for your hard work on that, very comprehensive from what I've read. I mean, I only got through half of it, I mean, a lot of stuff in there, but, um, I'll take some comments from the board on this, um, anyone have a comment?
I'd like to start, actually.
Christina.
So, um, I was not at the last meeting, I just said in death my family. Uh, and this conversation has been ongoing about policies, procedures, rules and regulations for a really long time. Chris and Mary and I have had decent amount of conversations on what we, um, thought this should look like and we've read a lot. So I'm a bit concerned because the last conversation I recall is that, Betsy, you were going to work on special permit and site plan review checklist and that you thought that was the urgent need and that was your, your lane. And we were all working on a similar document. So I'm unsure where a subcommittee and you, why we're not communicating and where your direction is coming from, because this is the exact similar document that we have been working on. Um, I am concerned because we're working on these things in conjunction with a document that still has tremendous amount of flaws, the zoning bylaw. I mean, you open it up and even just tonight, the 10.3 has random language in it. So I was under the impression you were working on special permit and site plan checklist and you thought that was your urgent need. To me, the urgent need with your time and I don't know who's directing your time, is to fix the zoning bylaws and the planning board subcommittee was talking about how we thought they should look. Um, another example is the adult entertainment. We had something, it went through two review processes, you took a look at it again and there was confusion on the floor because language wasn't interpreted and there was inconsistent language and feet. So I think the work is important of the subcommittee and I don't know really where the disconnect is. So I didn't look at this document, I just got back. And this is completely different than what I had thought you were working on. So, um, I think maybe going back or talking to the committee, I mean, the board, on what you think and where your time should be, instead of going, you know, taken upon yourself, is maybe a conversation with what you think we need you as a support role. Because this was something that I think that we were working on. Um, and like I said, I haven't looked at it, so I can't give you the put on it. But I was thinking that we were going to get a checklist on special permit and site plan review and the 81, you know, the outside contractors, not a 77-page document. That's my two cents.
So there are checklists on site plan and special permit and I made it clear, um, from the initial discussions that I was working on, rules and regs, 4453G. Um, I would take Chris Olney's comments about driveways and review and update, um, the driveways with the DPW and, um, and also, um, deal with, um, the general provisions and conduct at planning board meetings and clarify.
I never heard any of that and I'm not here to go back and forth, but the subcommittee is designed, was established to do this work, so.
So where is the subcommittee at right now?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I would agree with what Christina said, um, the, the planning board established, um, the subcommittee to do the rules and regulations and we started on it and then we got sidetracked because of the zoning bylaws and we were told to wait until town meeting and then start up. So we started back up and, um, we had a working document and we're meeting on Wednesday. Um, I know Betsy had reached out to Chris and I when Christina had to abruptly go out of town and asked if she should put off the, this public hearing, um, and what she should do with the curb cuts. And I said, yes, you should probably push back the public hearing because we're still working on the rules and regulations. And the curb cuts is separate. Um, last I had heard, actually Susan was taking over curb cuts. I had heard that through Sarah, that she was gonna look at the, um, curb cut regs and draft something. Um, so unfortunately, there seems again to be a lot of confusion, but the, the rules and regulation subcommittee is in force, um, and working on it. So I'm not sure what the town planner has been doing, but, um, we've been working on the rules and regulations. So again, you know, I had suggested that this public hearing be pushed out because of a death in somebody's family, um, and, um, and I guess, yeah, I guess that wasn't done. But, um, so I think that this public hearing unfortunately is premature and, um.
So, uh, can the third member of the subcommittee speak?
Yes, um.
So it is a daunting task to read through those regulations or procedures or whatever they are. And I wanna commend Betsy for attempting to draft them because, uh, it's, it's a huge task. Uh, and she did use, as Christina suggested, the Harvard, Town of Harvard, uh, procedures as a guide. And actually, what came out of it is a pretty good document. It's not perfect, as Betsy said, I don't think, and I haven't done a complete thorough review. But I think one thing we should be careful of is to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And what we have now is nothing, so this is light years ahead of where we are today. Uh, and I would add that the great thing about these regulations is if we need to change them, we can change them. They're, they're not, they're not nearly as, uh, cast in stone as the zoning regulations are. Uh, I think it's important to get public input in this and I hope some public have, are attempted to read them. Um, I'd be interested to hear what they have to say about it. Uh, but I think it's, uh, I think when you read it, it's, you know, what can you say about the planning board procedures? It's what we do. Uh, it's just, it's interesting to see it all written down in great detail, but, um, it's very helpful, in fact, in, in steering our act, our actions as we go forward, so. And I, I guess I wanna add that we're gonna probably adopt them at some point and I bet within six months we change them because we'll learn as we follow them that some things don't work very well. So that's, and that's fine, that's how regulations are supposed to work. So I, I'm not going to complain about Betsy doing this, I think it's a great service. I think when, uh, we all read them, I think we'll feel much more comfortable that, that there's things, there's something that we can adopt.
Laura.
First, I wanna say how sorry I am for your loss. I really do mean that sincerely. And, um, there are often times when one of us can't come to a meeting for whatever reason it might be. At the last meeting, we discussed with Betsy the rules and regulations that she was working on. And we have a professional staff, town planner, who, uh, has a great experience, long years of experience with other towns and we were asked at that last meeting to review this document. It is a heavy lift and I spent a lot of time reviewing it. And, uh, you know, not to say that everybody's had time to do that, but I think it's a, an excellent document. I think that, um, Betsy is a professional and she knows what she's doing. And so I'd like to say, you know, let's thank her for her efforts and let's modify it as we feel like we need to do. Um, we're all working together here and, and I think we have a, um, high quality professional on our staff. So I read through it, I do have some additional comments tonight that are basically just things that I missed the first time or I, you know, when I saw some other edits, it made me think of something, you know, edits that weren't in the document at that time. But by and large, um, I think adopting this document would really be the right thing to do because it strengthens all of our procedures. It talks about the kinds of consultants we need for site plan review and special permit review and it really, um, provides us the kind of working document that we need to get going. And we're all really busy and if the substance of the zoning laws is what we wanna focus our time on and whether we wanna have ADUs and senior housing and all the rest, then let's do that. And, and this is procedural stuff, let's lean on our town planner to, to draft that for us with our input and then say, great, pencils down, let's go. Let's, um, I, let's discuss it and adopt it.
Yeah.
Um, I echo what Laura just said in terms of moving forward. And, um, I would suggest two other sort of process things. One is we really need to get the 4453G adopted ASAP. The, um, we were gonna, we are gonna require money from self-signaling and we are gonna need consultants and we need to have a process for handling that. So to me, that's of great urgency. Um, the other suggestion is that I just, I haven't, um, seen the document from the working group, sort of echoing the criticism of zoning, it's just, I understand why. It's like, it's a big lift and, and it's hard to, to, um, so, um, Betsy has created a great, um, document and maybe the subcommittee can kinda walk through it in some detail, using it as the basis, um, and ma, and make any suggested changes for a, a round two. Um, maybe we take it up with, in another, you know, we adopt it. It's, would be my suggestion with some, I have some comments as well. Um, and then we then put on the calendar in September to take the input of this, the committee that has gone through it in greater details, already thought about those issues and make modifications as needed. But that might, and so that might be kind of a, um, a dual opportunity, right? The, the subcommittee has thought about these issues more than I have perhaps and can, but can take this as the starting point. Um, so that's a kind of, and, and can, and can maybe substitute in if there's better language that has already been drafted or is out there in the, in the document that, that you started. Um, for sure, we can sub one in for the other, but I think that this moves us forward. Um, so, and I do have a few specific comments when we get to that.
Any other comments? Uh, okay.
Um, I, I can't comment to the document because I haven't looked at it, but I think, um, again, apologize for my voice. Um, I think we have to get way better at, um, communicating. I think, um, in some regards, it's given, um, a subcommittee that was formed to work on things. And I know for myself, I've been doing a lot of research in the background. It's kind of giving the three members that took this on to deal with it the middle finger by not even giving them the common courtesy to say, you know what, guys, stop working on it. We're gonna have staff work on it. So it set an awful precedent to say, let's form a subcommittee and have people work on things and then have somebody decide they wanna take it on and not even coordinate with the subcommittee. So the subcommittee has not been dismanted, disbanded. Our, our, um, course of action has not been altered by anybody, certainly has not been altered by the planning board. So I think we have to get better at this, we have to be more professional and better communication. And I think this is a prime example of just total unprofessionalism.
Well, Betsy did wanna join your committee, um, but she couldn't make it down in person. So we were trying to set up a Zoom meeting so she could attend your meetings.
Well, I think attending is great. But she didn't attend, she took over the document. And so again, I'm not talking to the document, it might be great and it might be what we end up adopting, but I think the process has been really, um, poorly done.
Uh, Becky, you have a comment?
I do have a comment.
Well, I got, wait, 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 I got a Becky and a Betsy.
Oh, sorry.
So let's start with the Becky and then we'll go to the Betsy.
Um, thank you very much. I do have two comments. I, I want to reiterate what both Laura and, um, well, three. Laura, Sarah and Chris said, we have a professional in town and who is available to use and with great expertise. Um, and I, I'm a little confused as to why, um, people would wanna take time to do something that is completely in her lane and she knows very well. That was one comment. But the other, um, is, and, and I don't know whether Chris, Mary or Christina can talk to this, but I've been trying to find notes to follow your, um, or minutes to follow what you all have discussed. And I, and, and please correct me if I've got this wrong, but I thought this group was set up quite some time ago. I mean, over a year and then just stopped meeting. So now it's picking back up, but if you have someone who can help you, it's, I guess I don't understand why there's even a struggle over who does it unless it's a difference of opinion as to what should be in those bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy.
So to address Mary's comments, um, over a month ago, when, uh, first of all, I was not even aware that there was a planning board subcommittee, um, on rules and regs, um, several months ago. Um, and there weren't any rules and regulations and the, a lot of documents were buried in the subdivision rules and regulations where they shouldn't be. And so I talked with Ron about it and basically said it wouldn't take me that long to draft up something. And then I recall very clearly, over a month ago, at a planning board meeting, when I found out that there was this rules and regulations committee, I asked what the interface was and how we were gonna communicate. And I was told by Chris, or Chris stated at the meeting that we were working on different documents. And I didn't quite understand what those different documents were. So, and then there was mention of this Harvard as a template and so I looked at that and I rejiggered, um, my entire document um, that I had been working on and was like three quarters of the way done. Um, so this document was, um, the first draft of it was put out on March 24th or before. And then the revised version, um, which includes some documents from some planning board members, was April 6th. So, um, I wanna make it clear, it was, um, I haven't seen any minutes of the subcommittee meetings. I haven't seen any document generated for discussion by the subcommittee. Um, I have tried to keep everybody aware of what I was doing based on these documents, this document that I have shipped out to people. Um, and that's that.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think, um, what I feel from the board is that we wanna, um, continue making comments on the document that Betsy has written and then use that as a starting point and then maybe bring it back to your committee for honing. Um, is that kinda what I'm hearing?
I think we, I'd like to see us adopt the 4453G and some other pieces of it ASAP, probably with a second read. I think it's what we, I think we did agree that, and some members have not been able to read it yet, that we would do a first read and a second read. I think that's, isn't that one of the procedures that, that is in here? Um, and that we had talked about.
One more, one more question.
Yeah. Um, so, um, you know, I think we need to move ahead with, with at least that and, and the special permit pieces. Um, so I, I think it's.
So you wanna break this up into pieces?
Well, I, I mean, at the very least, at the very least, I, as opposed to what I thought I heard you say is how, get some input and then send it to the committee and have them. I, I was suggesting that we adopt it and then let the committee make amendments to it. Is what I, or, you know, adopt it with edits.
So, so I don't see why the subcommittee can't continue to meet.
Right.
And use Betsy's, uh, work as something to look, compare with ours.
That was my fault.
There's no reason to wait.
Would that be acceptable?
Are we working towards a, a particular deadline now that we have the special permit?
Well, we would like to get this done by May, my, beginning of May.
It's busy.
Because we have cell signaling coming in, in mid-May. Because we have self signaling coming in, in mid-May is the current plan. Betsy, am I wrong on that or is that the 14th or something like that?
Self signaling indicated that they would be submitting their application in mid-May and they potentially wanted to try to come to the planning board meeting just to kind of introduce everybody and have a short discussion. And so, I think that probably some of the discussion will be on if specialists need to be hired under 4453G because we don't have the staff expertise.
Betsy, can that section stand on its own?
Yeah, I think so.
What was the question?
Can that section stand on its own, that section of the regulations? Can it just stand on its own as a free standing document?
Yes, yes, yes. But it's presented here as part of an integrated document, but it can be on its own.
I mean, the other stuff's pretty benign, I know. If you want to break it out to get this through.
I don't have a suggestion.
Yeah, sure.
For those of us who have read it and have comments tonight, perhaps we could provide our comments tonight that are substantive, not typos and stuff. And then, Betsy could make those edits and then get it to the subcommittee team to look at it, come back in two weeks or a month, whatever it is, and adopt it.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I would say, I would say, let me just give Betsy the comments because I don't know, if it's just going to be track changes, it doesn't matter. You know, if this is her original document or Harvard's document and then it's just track changes, then one person needs to keep that and do the track changes.
I guess if there's specific content, I guess the subcommittee has thought about issues, right? So that the...
So, we'll just leave those as comments. Oh, that's fine.
But if you want to have a meeting, a working session to go over them, that would be good.
I mean, I think it's probably best just to do it as a board now and always go over each of them. I mean, I think, you know, and one of the things in here will be...
Subcommittee processes. Yep.
And, but yeah, I mean, if this, again, if this is just working off of Harvard, that's what we were working off of. And I think curb cuts should be separate because that is a separate thing. And I don't know if she's got applications in here or not.
She does.
And, so, yeah, I mean, the subcommittee talked about a lot of things to put in there and Chris had spoken with the town administrator. So, there's a lot of things that wanted to be included.
Those things are in actually.
Oh, well, so we've already had discussions, okay. He already incorporated things in there. So, is it track changed in here?
Yeah, the track change.
Okay.
So, the track change date is noted on the front page. So, there were, I started with a base document and then there have been two track changes. And they're dated.
So, you're on version two or version three?
So, version three, version three has the draft from March 24th and then revised to April 6th.
So, I guess I'm asking, is there a folder out there where we can see version one and then version two? Or are you just keeping it all in one document?
I didn't get your question.
Is there a folder out there where we could see version one and then version two? Or are you doing it just all in one document?
I think I've sent, I can, I think I've sent all the versions out to the board, but I can send them out again.
Doesn't it make sense to have one version?
Yeah, keep it in one. Betsy's making the edits and it's tracking changes. We'll see them and it doesn't matter if it was one or two, you'll still see the version. You'll see the edit rather than the version.
And just to be clear, I think we had agreed that it was too, we tried in the zoning to actually edit the documents, to put our comments in to the document and with track changes. But I think we decided that was a violation of open meeting law, so...
So, the way we've been doing it, which seems like it could work if Betsy will continue to play along with us, is that Betsy's the editor of the document. We send our changes by email to her, which she's requested, which we've been doing.
As opposed to editing.
And then she's going to make the edits in the document, track those changes.
Yeah, because SharePoint, you can actually all edit.
Yeah, let's not do that. That's a mess.
So, all edits will go in and then we'll discuss them and then some might come in, some might change, some whatever. So, are we going to vote to disband the rules and regulations subcommittee?
How do we need, do we need to?
No, I think we have, I think the rules and regulations subcommittee can take a, you know, once we adopt this, can take another look at it and keep it current with Betsy.
I'd keep the committee current.
Is there any reason why the rules and regulations committee was meeting on Wednesday morning could not take this draft and review it?
Well, I mean, I guess I, you know, each member can decide for themselves, but I, you know, I would go, personally, I would go back and rethink my role in it because, yeah, I mean, I don't know that we were, went into a subcommittee thinking we were going to be proofreaders. So, I mean, I think... It kind of sounded like it.
No, I don't think it's proofreading.
We had nothing. With all due respect, we're all busy. We've been writing zoning language. This is, this is starting from something, which seems to be based on the Harvard regulations. Maybe it's 85% of the way there, maybe it's 95% of the way there. Unless the subcommittee says, "We want to meet and look at it between the next meeting and report back," which we, I think we'd all welcome to do, then let's go with the method, we all send our comments to Betsy, decide what is a reasonable amount of time and then come back and discuss it in one document, which Betsy has edited. I mean, I think it's clear here, it's process oriented. There's, it's got a lot of good stuff in it, which otherwise we're completely lacking. So, I think it's just talking about this or it's something in the abstract that doesn't yet exist, at least that I've seen. So, I would propose we work with this document and continue to edit it, but on a timeline so that we can get it done before the special permit.
Yeah, I want to take public comment. I see...
I have a question for Betsy before we take comment. Can I get a question? So, Betsy, this is a general question. I will send some specific comments to you that are small things. But in general, there are some topics that are covered by the, that are redundant with the handbook that we just voted to adopt with Mass General laws and with, maybe, redundant might not be the right word, but overlapping with zoning. And so...
Overlapping with zoning?
Well, the site plan review criteria and some of those things that are listed seem to me to be a little bit, I guess my question is where you have overlaps, let's say with Mass General law or with that handbook. Would it make sense to refer, to just simply reference those external documents? Or do you feel like you've added regulatory material around those existing laws in a way that...
So, Mass General law basically allows the planning board to adopt their own rules and regs for various procedures. So, this is, so particularly on, so for example, the section that deals with adoption of amendments. I basically took that section right out of Mass General law and put it in the regulations. I could have referenced it, but my stance is that it's often really convenient to have a document that reminds the board and reminds citizens that this is the process. So, instead of going out and having to dig through Mass General law, you know, I could have referenced 48 section six, 48 section five, whatever. But sometimes it's more convenient to have the reference and then say, "This is in essence what it says."
That's exactly, example, another one was conflict of interest.
Right. So, on the special permit and site plan, you have the ability to adopt rules and regs and tweak it a little. So, for example, I ended up giving a list of extra studies where the planning board may want to look at A, B, C, D, and maybe hire an outside person to look at, you know, something. Laura ended up adding a bunch more to that. So, it just gives you a depth of information and requirements and gives the applicant a heads up that this is what may be coming down the pike for you if you're developing a particularly sensitive property or a property that's going to be a very large development or if you're going to use unusual energy sources or all of that. So, my preference, I can certainly reference Mass General law, but it's, I think it's easier and more understandable for the layperson as well as the board member to kind of have the information there.
Sarah? Yeah, that was my question. I believe, Sarah, Betsy, that I read a clause in the planning board rules and regs that said if there is, yeah, if there's information that's, then the zoning regulations govern and then above those, of course, Mass General, Mass Regs govern. So, I think that would, that would give us some comfort out.
Yeah, it's just more, sometimes a few reasons, repeat something.
And the thing that I would add is that the town clerk document is the town clerk's documents. And that's what she gives out to people. And I'm not clear whether it's the planning boards to accept and adopt because she's already adopted it and handing it out. Your rules and regulations are the planning board rules and regulations and those are your documents that have been generated for you to accept and adopt.
Okay, thanks. Public comments?
Oh, just who has a comment before you?
This is very quick. So, first of all, as a very new member of the board, a document like this for me to have when I was first sworn in would have been really helpful. I mean, the document I received from Diane, the town clerk, that helped me with procedure. And reading the zoning bylaws, that helps with what we're dealing with. I mean, that's a big lift and I don't profess to have mastered that at all. But this document for new board members in particular, I think is really essential. So, I would hate to see it drag on for, you know, till the end of the year. It would be much more helpful for it to be done sooner rather than later to accommodate board members, you know, new board members who've come on. I did have confusion with reading it and I did not get all the way through with how I should approach the zoning bylaw change. We are considering the administrative section 12 and some of the items in there and how I should relate it to this. So, I think making that clear, I didn't see that one comment within the document. But I think we need to make that clear, especially since we're still in the drafting phase of the administrative section 12 bylaw change. The last comment I'll make is with respect to the most current discussion, putting all the meat of the actual statutes in from Mass General law, I think maybe that might be a little heavy. And one suggestion I would make, take it or leave it, is have an appendix that has the relevant sections of the Mass General law in there, be an easy reference at the end for people, "Oh, what does that one say again? There it is." But not have the entire text of it in the body of the new document.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a public comment. JB, you have your hand up. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. This is Jack Bark, 16 Ocean Street in Manchester. I'm listening to the discussion tonight on rules and regulations. I agree with Ms. Tenney's comments that you have a good working document provided by the town planner and I would recommend that the board accept that it's a working plan. You can always make changes with subcommittees or further meetings. And I think time is of the essence to get something onboard as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bark. Any other comments from the board, from the public? Okay, so...
I have a procedural question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
This is for Betsy. Once we vote to adopt a document, is there an appeal period before it becomes effective? Or is it...
No.
Okay, good to know. Well, they're just in terms of thinking of self signaling and...
No, this, what would happen is this document or whatever final document got voted would be cleaned up and then it's required to be posted with the town clerk. Now, that's for rules and regs and applications. And a fee schedule, I believe, so there are two fees that are, if you look at the fee schedule, there are two fees that are out of whack with the rest of the world. And those are site plan and special permit fees, which are 150 and 175. Most, I did do an analysis of about six or eight different communities and most people, their special permit fees are in the 300 to 400 range. So, the goal here is, the, as it stands right now, the town pays for, the planning board pays for the legal notice, sending out to a Butters and kind of the processing. And so, I would, I would suggest, and I understand this has to go to the board of selectmen for review, that those two fees, site plan and special permit, get bumped up a bit so that we can at minimum cover the costs of the application. Because sometimes the legal notices are getting pricey, if they're not already pricey. And Gail Hunter may have a better idea on the kind of average cost of a legal notice, but they're not cheap. And the subdivision rules and regulations, which are not part, they're included in the table of contents, but I have not started working on them. The subdivision rules and regulations actually have to be, once they get reviewed and approved by the planning board, they get stamped in with the town clerk and then they get recorded at the registry of deeds. Now, I have yet to find a planning board, a Manchester-by-the-Sea planning board rules and regs for subdivision, recorded at the registry of deeds, which indicates that they probably haven't been. So, that's something that needs to be done in order for them to be legally binding. The subdivision rules and regs, the reason that I feel it's important that they be updated is that a number of references in site plan and special permit reference procedures in the... procedures in the planning board subdivision rules and regs. And the subdivision rules and regs unfortunately haven't been updated for a while and they do not include things like low impact development and drainage whales and cul tech systems and a number of other things that need to be included. So I realized there hasn't been a subdivision in a decade or so, but they, they really need to be updated.
Okay. Thank you. So I think what the, the board is suggesting is that we send comments to sum up to Betsy over the next week or so. So she can incorporate into a track changes document. I think we're gonna continue with the subcommittee to review the document.
Have fun.
And not just wordsmithing.
That's what?
Not just proofing it.
That's my area of expertise.
That is true.
So do we wanna vote this or is it just a general consensus?
To make continue the public hearing.
Yeah, I approve that we continue the public hearing until April 24th at seven o'clock.
Okay. I will, Betsy, you have a comment before we move forward?
I do have a comment. That's what I was gonna recommend, but also if people get me their comments, whether it's the subcommittee or additional comments that people have in rereading it, if people get me their comments, I will try to get the document reworked so that I can put it on SharePoint by next Wednesday or Thursday.
That'd be great.
I would like to request in, when you put it up again, if you could put a printout in our box because it's so, I really need to see it in a printout version and my my printer doesn't print the track changes.
There's a paper issue.
So I would like, I would actually like, you can print it two, two pages per. But I would like, I would actually like a printed copy. I don't know anybody, anybody else, just because it's volume.
I think it's a good idea that we all get printed.
All right, so I will make printouts for everybody for Thursday, next, a week from Thursday and you can come to Town Hall and pick them up.
Okay. All right, so I'd need to vote to, motion to continue the public hearing to April 24th at 7:00 PM, well. 7:30 maybe?
7:15.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
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 Hey, we are moving on from that. Thank you, Betsy. Planner's report, you're on again. I think we all got a copy of it. We pretty much discussed. Anything different on that that we haven't discussed?
I don't think so. I do have an update though.
Update?
So I think I mentioned in one of my planners' memos that MIT, a class at MIT was interested in doing a practicum in Manchester by the Sea. And particularly, the practicum would be on MBTA housing and sustainability, resiliency issues. And we had actually been approached by a professor at MIT and his class, which will be six to eight people. They are interested in starting in the fall to do this practicum. And I just received notice late today that we, it was narrowed down to three communities and Ron and myself and Greg Fetersfield had a meeting on Friday afternoon and the professor was also involved and he got back to me today to say that his favorite was Manchester. So we may have, there may be a practicum class working in the fall in Manchester on those issues.
And it's a multi-talented group. They can do graphics, they can go tell us which, which housing is already there. We can have a good, a good, I think it'll be a good so. Sounds like it's a plus, win-win for everyone. Okay, thank you.
Well, it never, it never hurts to have another set of eyes.
We also told them that we have an MIT person in
Who's the professor again? Yeah, I guess my only, my only caution, given the sensitive and even a lot of opinions about this, I think it's, I think that this is really positive and that they can do a lot of graphic images and how, and also create kind of a, you know, we're all immersed in it, right? They're gonna help us to see it from a different lens. I, I think that when, anytime you have a student group, that it's important to have ground rules about how they, so I've worked with many, many student groups, many, 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 many. So I'd be happy to help think about those ground rules because I think that is part of being a, a consultant is knowing how to frame your work because they are essentially where their client, I guess, right?
So Jeff Levine is the MIT professor and he is, he basically will select his practicum group with people who do mapping and, and data crunching, people who do, are urban designers who are able to provide the visuals and people who are more word focused.
Great.
So that combination should be able, and it's a semester-long class, so that may visually be able, visually data crunch and and mapping should be able to help us.
Yeah, great. Mary?
So is this, I guess I missed it, is this working with the planning board, with the task force? When is there like assignment?
Yeah, I think they'll be initially working with the task force because of the timeframe. Task force will be going at that point, so that, that's kind of, I think, the plan.
And, and doing graphs and charts, I, I'm not clear what they're doing.
Yeah, we'll have to play that by year, how that comes out. Yeah, no, it sounds like a plus. Catherine Bellata, you have a comment to us?
Yes, I just wanna really support what Sarah just said. I've used many of these teams in a corporate environment to do projects. I've all, I was also a lecturer at a Boston University and sent students out to do these types of projects. You, you really have to set the boundaries, so, so I just, Betsy, I hear your description of what the professor wants, but what the professors and the student wants may be different than what Manchester needs. So I just, we need to set clear boundaries. I just wanna really support what Sarah said because it's very important. They will, they will do what they need for their, their outcomes that they wanna achieve. Whatever we think we want them to achieve, we would be well suited to really narrow them in on some particular topic where we think we could use some additional help. Thank you.
I agree with you and this is not my first rodeo dealing with students, so I'm very well aware and hopefully Sarah and I can come up with a list of things that will keep everybody in check. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. Thank you, Betsy, on the planner's report. Just on the liaison committees, just go through them quickly. Coastal Zone Management, any update?
No update. We haven't met.
Harbor Management Plan Working?
Oh, we haven't met yet.
FEMA Maps Let Playing Bylaw, we talked about.
Ooh, do we have those hard copies?
Do we have what?
The hard copies?
Uh, that's a good question. We have the
And did we get the
The hard copies are available with the Sue Croft who is working with the Harbor Committee Group and Gail Hunter has the other paper copy. And I have asked repeatedly of FEMA whether we have an extension of our timeframe to comment and I, he never go back to me and I've made multiple requests. So what I suggest is if we look over the hard copy maps which you can come in and get them from Gail and take a look at them, we'll probably have kind of sign out list. And we just offer comments.
Ron, can we review them as a board? I think we should do that. So, I mean, if the board has comments.
We'll put it on the agenda once we get them, let them know when we get them.
No, they're, we have them. They're in the building. We should just bring them to the next meeting, come a few minutes early, take a look at them and then comment on them at the meeting. There's only three copies.
We can bring it to the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're available online too, right?
They are, but they're
Hard to read.
They got me a agenda. Okay.
Is there a low res or why?
On a small scale.
Are they low resolution?
And so you gotta kind of keep scrolling over and then scrolling over again and I found them hard, but I guess I don't have a big mind.
Do we know how to get them online?
I think they were posted.
They're in our packet from one of the oh, okay. Meetings, I believe, right? FEMA?
Yeah.
Send out the link?
Could they be in our packets for the next meeting? If, or whenever the, whenever this goes on the agenda, could they appear in our packets?
packets, you mean the link?
Correct. The, yeah, the link or, yep. That's just in GIS.
Okay, yeah, I'll leave that link if anyone has it, I'll try to dig it out. FEMA Maps, Rules and Regulations, something we talked about, MBTA Community Task Force, no meetings yet, but they're still being formed. Water Resource Task Force. The, certain members met with a water meter vendor company, Neptune, on March 29th. Our next meeting is Wednesday. The thought is to replace the water meters at everyone's house with these ultrasonic types that give real-time information to the homeowner and to the DPW, you know, if there's a break or something, so. They are, current budget price was 500 per meter, so I don't know where that's going, but stay tuned. On the CPC, the projects were approved at town meeting. Our next meeting, I believe, is April 27th.
Could you go back to the water resource? What's going on with the PFAS? Has there been any
You attended that PFAS one. I was not a
Uh, the only, well, the only comment that I got at that, at that meeting was that Scott Horsley had a person who can take a water sample and determine by the signature of the, the chemical compounds that presume of the PFAS in the water if it can be linked to a particular source. And so his person said it was not specifically linked to the high school or the Brook Street Field surface. That doesn't, this doesn't mean that it's not related to any, any particular thing, but it's not definitively sourced there, the, the fingerprint, so to speak. That's the only discussion that came up about PFAS at the meeting that I was at.
So was there no talk about the pipes and redirecting them and how to mediate?
Not at the meeting I went to, but I also suspect that is a DPW Select Board discussion rather than the Water Resource Task Force, but
The, they're meeting on Wednesday and they're gonna get an update on UAW and PFAS from Chuck. Task Force.
Who's meeting on Wednesday?
The Water Task Force.
Right. 27. Okay. Proposals of regular minutes on February 27th, I think was the public hearing meeting, I believe, and ended a very exhaustive set of minutes. I made a couple of wordsmithing comments. Anyone else have any substantive comments? Otherwise you'll
I'll move to a move, amend the February 27th. Not to amend, to approve. Sorry, approve them.
As amended.
As amended.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Only?
Yes.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
Yes. Epstein, who was not there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and it's approved. Gail?
I have a one minute's question.
Hey, what question?
A minute's question. Betsy, the 9th of February was a working session. I think it was Chris, me and Christina. And you were gonna do the just action minutes, I think. My notes, that's what my notes said, otherwise have you, Gail had asked me about that.
I can go back and look and see what I have.
It was in the, it was in the, remember it was in the meet, in the room seven. If not, I can go back and see what I have.
And I think there was also another document, there was a there was a document that Gail was looking for regarding one of those meetings.
It was the public, the hearing slides which I gave to her. I gave before she left.
Okay, so she's got those now?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Items that I didn't anticipate, maybe Kathy Bellata can back me up, but today the chairs and committee leaders met with Select Board member Kathy Bellata and Sue Beckman on looking to improve governance, town government, trying to integrate and linkage boards together. They wanted, a couple of proposals using a, a clear liaison program, setting task force with timeframes and boundaries. And the recommendations for improvements are gonna be given to the Select Board on their meeting on the 18th. I think that's a synopsis I have on that. Kathy, any comments on, to the board on, on the governance?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good synopsis, Ron. The only thing I'd add is we did ask all of the boards and committees to submit their proposed fiscal year '24 goals, their top three goals. The, as you indicated, the, the intent is to improve communication amongst the boards. So the more we all understand what everybody else is working on, you know, in theory that will improve the communication amongst the various boards, committees and department heads. So we will present our recommendations to the board, the full Board of Select, Select Board on Tuesday night.
Thanks, Kathy. Any comments on that?
Should we say what our goals are?
Our goals? Well, I, I sort of gave them a, you know, what our goals are is, you know, we have some this amendments to some zoning, we're looking to do, we're looking to write some new bylaws. We're trying to get through this self signaling, sort of immediate things.
MBTA, sorry.
And the 40A, so those are three major goals and I, I think I gave that to them in the survey. Beyond that, I think that's a big apple for us. You know, plus all these subcommittees that are going on with everyone, so. All right, Laura, sorry.
On making the boards work more effectively together, one of the sections in the Planning Board Rules and Regs that were drafted that I liked was at least for the, for the, you know, permit granting authorities, that the town planner or the professional staff who are assisting the planning boards, there was a list of tasks, I don't have it in front of me right now, but things that the planner did that made it kind of explicit and I thought a helpful way, and one of those included, you know, working with And one of those included, you know, working with, uh, the applicants and the boards to determine the sequence of the required approvals process. And that might be different depending on what the item at hand is. But I think that would be really helpful because we often have this question about, well, should it come to us first or the ZBA or the CONCOM? And maybe the answer is different each time.
Or subcommittee.
Great, so I think it's in there, but take a look at that section in particular because that would, particularly with professional staff help. I think that would help us run a more efficient process and get to a better outcome.
Well, it helps the applicant too.
Cause-
Beg your pardon?
It helps the applicant.
Yes, yeah.
There's been situations where they've gone in front of the planning board and then the CBA
Clarity, right, yeah.
and then they go back in front of the planning board because they're like-
Makes perfect sense, yeah.
Good, yeah.
Any other comments?
Yes, thank you for that. Uh, the permitting process is something that Susan Beckman captured as an action item and, um, recommendation to the, to the Select Board.
Right.
Thank you.
Good.
Is there, oh, something else, I just quick comment. Are we done with that? I didn't wanna jump in. So I guess we, we don't do, in my opinion, we don't do a good job at following up. We had a conversation about the Essex County Club and the reports and where that was. So I feel like we're not all-
It was in the packet.
This one?
No, last one.
Last meeting, okay, all right, I, I took that, my, my, I bought that. And then my other one was like the town meeting report. We've always read those, voted on them, so I feel like, um, I didn't read the rules and regulations, but is that in there? Like, when that report happens, the approval, can you read that?
Oh, we could add any regula-
I just feel like things keep changing over time and I just don't know how we're gonna capture some of that. So, we didn't talk about the town report.
Can you just say a little bit more what you mean? The town report, reading annual report.
The annual report, the board usually reviews that, writes it together, someone, we talk about it at least. I mean, we didn't even have a conversation about it this year.
Yeah, I was asked to write a town report. It's basically the facts of what we did over the year.
I know, it's just a different process this year. I get it, it's just different, right?
Well, I didn't think there was anything in there that the board really, you know-
Well, my name was spelled incorrectly. So, I mean, at least a little review would have been nice. I mean, I'm just saying, like, there, this year it was different, wouldn't even look at it.
I'll make sure everyone looks at it next year.
Well, I think Christina's, um, suggestion is actually, Betsy, that we add a small section on the town report is, at least, you know, a process for reviewing the town report.
That reminds me, one of the things I wanted to bring up sooner than later is a Planning Board budget, um, which, um, I think we need to, since the new fiscal year starting July 1. If we want to have some money, um, some things that we wanna have in our budget, we should start thinking about that.
But we have a small budget, there is a small budget that's in the planners, was approved at town meeting, right?
That still has money in it.
And then, then there was this sort of slush fund that, maybe that would be a follow-up for, um, Betsy as to what monies we have available, what she would recommend we use them for. And then maybe we all can have a discussion about that. Cause I think there was, there's the annual budget, but then there were these like,
Special pots.
Special pots of money that, you know, Sue would say. Cause we had this conversation with Sue and it was not clear to me where the, where, what we were spending. Oh, yeah, so, I think it's a good suggestion.
So, I, like, two comments on that. Um, one is that the, the, in the town report, there was a five-year capital plan and for planning board studies, and it was for 2024, 2025, 26. So somebody budgeted for studies. Um, I think I had sent an email and I never did that.
Yeah, so I talked to Greg about that. He said that was basically a placeholder for, um, you know, for monies. He, he really, you know, it was just kind of a placeholder we put in there. But we need to, we-
So I think to your point, it's important for the board to discuss what our placeholder should be.
Absolutely.
And then, um,
Yep.
I'm just debating whether I should mention it here, um.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I think it's, it's kind of planning board, it's really more FinCom, but, um, so if you look at the budget and what was for Planning Board and what was budgeted last year and then what's gonna be budgeted next year. It's for a full-time planner position and we have 23-hour position. Um, we just have a part-time now. So there's gonna be, you know, rough back of the napkin, $40,000 falling into the reserve fund. Can we as a planning board say, whoa, let's keep that money in Planning Board and use it for studies? That's my question.
Good idea. You could recommend it.
So we have money from la, we should have money from last year and we'll have money from this coming year and-
Last year probably goes to the general fund, but this year-
The last, right, and I'm sure that-
And it can be moved within category, right? Which means it's- No, remember, it can be moved within the category, but not across categories. So it would be for salaries, which might include consultants.
Isn't there somebody-
But not for new chairs.
And I think FinCom has to obviously okay that, um, or do it, right? Like, we could just make that suggestion. Um, but to try to keep that within Planning Board and then not, the next year go out to taxpayers and say, we need a $40,000 study and ask them for an extra $40,000 when we potentially already have it.
So do you think we can move, move the money into do that?
Uh, I, there was like, it can be moved within category and I don't know which category it sounds so. But, but I think Mary makes a good point. What do we want to achieve?
Right.
What, you know, do we have resources? Let's not, let's, let's, I would say, let's think about what are the things we wanna do? We mentioned tonight, maybe hiring somebody for a short amount of time to help us understand the groundwater protection intent and what we should be looking for. To me, that's like a small little scope. Um, you know, a few hours of Scott Horsley, he's already on contract, which is why it occurred to me. But somebody, maybe it's, you know, somebody from Metcalf, not Metcalf, any, um, Meridian, um, who can help us with that. You know, like somebody who didn't, but there may be other things that are a little bit larger, maybe helping us to write our floodplain bylaw, for example. Maybe that's a, a scope that would relieve Betsy to, you know, and we could have a, a professional who helps us, understands the floodplain rules and requirements, is an expert on this, can advise us about best practices and, um-
So we would go out and solicit a scope of work and try to get some bids in.
Right, and get some, and get a, well, I think that there's a, there's a list of, I think there's, if it's under a certain procurement dollars, you can just select somebody.
Okay.
Can't remember my MPC PPO training.
And are there funds left over in the Bobrowski contract that we, um?
Yes, there is, there's a little bit left in that.
A little bit left. So, yeah, maybe Betsy can just sort of summarize for us what the funds are that we have available and then we can think about also what needs we have. I would think floodplain bylaw might be a logical one. Cause that's actually related to the water protection. It's not, it's not the same thing as the water protection bylaw, but the same expertise, I would think, could advise us.
Laura?
On that same theme, as we think about writing, well, more regulations, zoning regulations that need to be written and, um, someone said tonight, you know, talking about the intent that we're trying to get to and discussing that and then having a lawyer actually write the thing rather than us write it. Because sometimes, we're not lawyers for the most part, some of us are. But, um, I think that we can, um, fall into writing things that, uh, then don't actually meet our intent of what we're trying to do. And we can also spend a lot of time, you know, kind of, uh, grammatical editing and, and, you know, down in the weeds when we might be able to get really effective work done if we could have a meeting with someone. I don't know if it's Mark Bobrowski or somebody else, you know, could be, it could be a new consultant.
It's not Mark.
He came on before my time here. But, so if we had someone in that position and we could all meet, you know, as a board and say, listen, this is what we're trying to do when it comes to non-conforming uses or something. Help us out. This person educates us a little bit on what are the, you know, pitfalls and the advantages. And then we say, okay, this is what we're trying to do. Go, go away and write something and then let us read your draft.
Well, it also gives us a metric when we come back to say, here were our goals. Does what we've got meet those goals? Or do we need to revise, oh, well, we didn't thought about that. So we need to first revise our goals or our intentions.
Right.
And then we can measure it against it or get, so I think if we start with the big picture as opposed to starting, I think Mark Bobrowski tended to start with the minutia.
Yeah.
That's yours.
Well, and after tonight, we should add 10.3 as a, a bylaw that might need some tweaking.
Definitely.
Clarity.
Uh, oh, Kathy Bellata, more comments?
Yes, just to follow up on your, um, discussion on the budget process. Um, the Select Board is having a joint meeting with FinCom this Thursday to do a postmortem on last year's budget process that we just completed. We'll be discussing, uh, what went well and what improvements we would like to suggest. So I will be taking, you know, your comments tonight here and, um, you know, bringing that into our discussion on Thursday. And I, I believe, uh, at today's meeting with the board and committee chairs, we already discussed the need to, um, have a clear process by which boards and committees can, uh, request funding, uh, for the upcoming year. So what you just discussed, um, we'll, we'll continue to work and, and see if we can come up with some additional clarity for you.
Thanks Kathy, uh, Betsy, are you gonna comment on the shifting of funds or?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, um, so pretty much every document that gets generated by the planning board or me, um, will go through legal for review. Um, and quite frankly, number of times, there are attorneys that are not planners, planners are not attorneys, or maybe both. Um, but in any case, I would rather have, particularly if it's a planning document, have a planner write it first and then have a legal review. So, um, I think it's just cleaner that way. Um, also in regard to some of the, um, some of the documents that were just mentioned, um, I've written probably three or four floodplain bylaws. So I'm not sure that we need an outside consultant to do that, particularly if, um, the state and FEMA and legal counsel are gonna be reviewing it.
Okay, thank you.
I have one final comment.
Final comment.
There's a lot of final reviews here, write this. What's the timeframe on this being finished? The zoning bylaw? There's a lot of errors in here still.
Oh, the one that was approved last November.
Yeah.
Well, Betsy's still reviewing it with, uh, town clerk. There's like 36 cross-references or something that are need to be sorted or?
So, um, I provided a pretty detailed email to several board members today regarding this. And I am in the process of reviewing it, um, from 2017 on. There were a number of cross-references that were never made and a number of errors that were made. And, um, hopefully within the next two weeks, I will have an analysis done of that. Um, and it will be reviewed by legal counsel.
Okay.
So does that mean, uh, when you say an analysis, do you mean the final zoning?
Uh, bylaw polish? Review of, I mean, right now, my last review of the document indicated about, um, three dozen changes that needed to be made. But I also didn't go back, I just reviewed it from 2022 on. And, um, there were just a number of cross-references. When you start getting into numbering, it gets messy.
Yeah.
And so nobody went back and renumbered things, so.
So I guess my question is just the doc, the section that we reviewed tonight, the first two paragraphs, three, five paragraphs are not relevant. So I guess just major typos and-
Yeah, you're correct, they're not.
What?
You're correct, they're not relevant.
So, when are these blatant errors gonna be fixed?
And they shouldn't have been corrected, they weren't corrected. Um, I can't give you a final date.
But so that's a different problem if there are errors in the way the, um, the section was written or in the history, then that's, that's something that I think has to be amended at town meeting. If there are scribners error-
It depends on the magnitude of the change and some of it may be scribner's errors, some of it may have to go back to town meeting.
Right.
Go.
Well, if we have to take out a section that doesn't belong there, then that's-
What I had stated in the email is my concern is that we've had so many people review this. And I know myself, I had sent a lot of, um, errors over before it went to the state and none of them got changed, um, they're still like that. And so, you know, we've had town council and Mark Bobrowski and the planning board and the town clerk and, I mean, everybody reviewing this document and there's still a lot of errors. So, um, I think we need a better, talk about processes. We need a better process in places of town. And, um, I think the definition of typos, I, I think you mentioned it today, Betsy, in your email, that, you know, if you, if you can catch it with spell check, then it's a typo. So something like that, that added language, unfortunately is gonna have to go back to town meeting. So it's just making the planning board not look so great. So if we can get a better process for, um, you know, I think we reviewed these pretty well and I think we sent along what the errors were. I just don't know where the disconnect is, but, um, you know, there's gonna-
The disconnect is, is when-
Be a fair amount of tweaks that are gonna have to go back to town meeting. And so we should be cognizant-
The dis-
Just missed it.
They're finished.
We should be cognizant of that when, when we decide what we're gonna bring to all town meeting as other bylaws, because if they start crisscrossing each other, it's gonna get too-
Yeah, it needs to get cleaned up before we turn next step.
Betsy, you had a comment, wasn't it?
No, I'm done.
Are we done? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we're done.
Yes.
Uh, has it been a motion moved seconded?
Yes.
Uh, roll call?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Yes. Be in two weeks.